Welcome, everybody, to the Lakeport City Council meeting today. And LT, well, let's start this thing on a Friday. Call of order, please.
Yes, so, Councilmember Matina?
Yes.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Spur?
Present. We're just returning back from closed session where there's no action to be reported. With that, Chief, could you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
(laughing). Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can tell, this is the last change. Tim Barnes is ill, so we're taking over for him. We, all of us. Okay. Looking for an acceptance of the agenda. And is there any urgency items, first of all?
None.
Okay. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to do the consent agenda. And with that, I'll have to wear my glasses. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under their regular agenda. Removing an item will be considered following the consent agenda calendar portion of the agenda. Okay. A, ordinance. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code Section 36934. B, minutes. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of April 2nd, 2019. C, renew the energy emergency resolution Menesino complex fire confirming the continued existence of local emergency for the Menesino complex, Dr. D, renew the emergency resolution February 2019 storms confirming the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Application WP 2019-001. Approve the application with staff recommendations for the 2019 drilling on the green event. F, application 2019-015. Approve the event with staff recommendations for the 2019 Library Park Farmers Market. H, contract. Approve the agreement with the Lake County Tourism Improvement District for administrative services and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. I, personnel request. Authorize staff to temporarily fill a police sergeant position with a police officer but leaving position budgeted as sergeant. J, out-of-town travel. Authorize the out-of-state travel as requested by city manager and community development director to attend the REC Con, the Global Retail Real Estate Convention in Las Vegas, Nevada, May 20th through the 21st, 2019, I would imagine, right?
Yes.
And that's all that's on the consent agenda. Does anybody on the council wish to talk or pull anything? We have somebody in the public that wants to talk about it. Anybody in the public would like to comment or pull anything?
Ms. Mayor, I'll make, or Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Okay. Next thing, public presentations. Any public input? Kelly?
I do not have any.
None. Okay. Does anybody in the public want to speak about something that is not on the agenda but we can't make any decisions on it? But you can speak if you like.
Oh, my gosh.
No? Okay. Moving right along, proclamation. Mayor Barnes, who is now ill, to present a proclamation for 2019 sexual assault awareness will be done by Maria Turner.
Thank you. I hardly have his flair, but I'll try. With the members of Lake Family Resource Center, please join me. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport designating the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lakeport. Whereas in 2018, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of at least 289 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, and the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the county of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victims, survivors, and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resource Center Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships improves the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Lakeport and calls upon all local governments, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence and exploitation. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Awesome. Yep. Okay. So, sexual assault does not discriminate, and I always say that anybody can be a victim of rape, and when they are, Lake County truly does have an amazing sexual assault response team, and they just, they work so diligently, like 24/7, responding at 3:00 in the morning, sometimes for 8 to, I don't know, 16 hours at a time, sitting at a hospital with somebody and just really working together at this very dark moment for somebody. And without our team, we just, without all of the Lake County collaboration, we wouldn't be this strong. And so, the proclamation did mention 289 people, 77 of which were served through our Rape Crisis Center. That's 77 people in one year. And that's not, that's not high, that's really low, because these are people who are reporting, and half of the county sexual assaults go unreported. So, we encourage everybody to speak up and talk about sexual assault and spread the awareness. And speaking of, Alicia is going to talk about Denim Day, which is an awareness event. So, you can talk about it.
Good evening. So, us at Lake Family Resource Center would like to invite everybody in the public to stand against sexual violence with us on Wednesday, April 24th, by breaking the dress code. Wear your jeans to work. So, it is National Denim Day on April 24th. And why denim? Well, that's a great question. So, let me tell you. Back in 1998, there was a young lady taking her very first driving lesson. Her 45-year-old married driving instructor came and picked her up at her home and drove her to a very remote area. He pulled her out of her car and wrestled her out of her blue jeans and proceeded to rape her. He threatened her with death and then made her drive the car back home. She did tell her parents, and he was subsequently arrested and convicted and put in jail. Great ending to a bad story. However, it doesn't end there. He appealed his conviction, and the chief justice of the Italian Supreme Court said, quote, "Because her jeans were very, very tight, it could not have been rape. She had to consent, so therefore, she had to consent by helping him remove the jeans, and therefore, no rape." And his conviction was overturned. This inflamed the ladies at the Italian Parliament, and they showed up the next day wearing denim. And it became a worldwide symbol of speaking out against sexual violence. Thank you.
By the way, all of our staff's gonna be wearing jeans on the 24th.
Thank you.
Is that the 24th? Yeah.
24th, Saturday, around 8:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that is also going to be read by Maria Turner.
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport designating the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lakeport. Whereas approximately 3 million children are reported abused and neglected in the United States each year. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, all citizens should become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and supporting parents in raising their children in safe and nurturing environments. Whereas new local initiatives to prevent child abuse include building resilience, a county-wide collaboration, adverse childhood experiences, nurturing families program, differential response, RCS wraparound services, infant massage, motherwise, and the protective factors. And whereas events take place in the community to promote awareness as follows. Child abuse awareness posters distributed in local businesses throughout the county for the month of April. April 13th, 2019, children's advocacy walk and festival, a mini-festival on the 14th at Senior Center in Clear Lake Oaks. Child abuse prevention placemats dispersed the month of April at the Lakeport Taco Bell. Children's Memorial Day Flag Ceremony. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Lakeport and calls its citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live.
You can take it?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys, all, for doing this amazing proclamation that we get every single year, right? So, I just wanted to touch a little bit and tell you guys, so, a single incident of child abuse impacts not only the child, but the family, the community, and the society at large. So, child abuse is a core underlying factor to many of the ongoing struggles of our community. So, we have high rates of school dropouts, we have homelessness, we have incarceration, and we have chronic health issues. So, in 2018, there was 978 reported cases of child abuse in Lake County alone. 136 of those were verified child victims, which came to one report every nine hours. And cost financially, for the whole child's life, $29.3 million. So, Lake County has come to, of course, we have the Children's Council, which provides education and training to schools, parent groups, community organizations, and professional groups about the prevention of child abuse both inside and outside of our homes. So, we have a bunch of events that take place not just in April, but throughout the whole year. Our main focus is definitely in April, but we want to keep that going throughout the whole year, because, could you imagine what we could do with $29.3 million in this community if we didn't have child abuse? So, I do invite all of you on April 26th for closing ceremonies, which will take place at the Lake County Office of Education out in front. There'll be a flag-raising ceremony. I encourage all of you guys to attend that. And I just want to thank you for letting us come today and for supporting child abuse prevention in hopes that we can end it. What do you think? Got it? Okay, now? Thanks.
All right. We're gonna change the next item up for council business. We want to do the Concerts in the Park first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The 2000, actually, this summer is gonna be the 40th year of the Concerts in the Park in Lakeport. And it'll be 35 years that BiCoastal Media has been running those concerts. So, it's been a long legacy and something that's very well enjoyed by our citizens and lots of visitors coming into our county. This year, BiCoastal Media wanted to change it up a little bit, and their contract doesn't end until, this is the last year on this contract, and they'll bring it back for you next year, but we want to do amendment to their contract. We're asking, they want to add a food court and a wine tasting garden to the event. The area for wine in the park will be in the park, and it'll be roped off, and anyone, you have to have the bracelets to go in, and anyone under 21 is not allowed in that tasting area. And then, the food court, they're planning on putting it in the parking lot here. What I'd ask for council is give staff a little flexibility to work with them, because if it's going at one or two, then maybe we might want to block some spaces on the street. But if we get a good turnout, would that be safer to have it in the parking lot and rope that off for just the food court? So, anyway, Sean is here from BiCoastal Media. Do you have any questions of him on this item? And that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Council?
Well, I remember at a California League of Cities meeting that was held over in Cloverdale, and we went to know they're on a Friday night, and they had like a fruit truck thing, and ...
Oh, that was so fun.
And I could see that this particular type of thing could really catch some, you know, some rhythm and get some momentum going and some traction, and I think it could be a really big thing. I already love the Concerts in the Park, but I think the missing element has been the fact that we've kind of made it so that they couldn't do what they want to do, and I think this would just open it up. And when you go to Cloverdale there, it's an entire, like, street fair, and it's just this, you know, this great festive atmosphere, and I think it would just enhance the entire event and just make it a little, I think it might start slow, but I could just see this growing and be part of that future contract, probably. But I really remember well that whole idea about the food trucks, and there's a big rage. Not that they gotta be food trucks, but just the fact that people get involved and they want to do that, make it more of a thing where they could come down, they don't have to, like, eat before they come. I just think it would be a really nice addition to an already great event.
Any other comments?
Well, I can agree more. I think it's long overdue to try this, so it'd be really fun. I think most people come down. Sometimes they don't make it because they're trying to get some food to bring down, or they head up to a restaurant. So, I think it's a great idea.
The only thing that I had is when I looked at the map, I thought that the wine area might be a little tight, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
The wine over here, she thinks, still tight.
Let's go with winemaker.
But I, like you said, I think being flexible is the key. If you give us some flexibility to work with that, yeah.
Yeah. The one question I had is about the food park. Are we gonna get, are they gonna get, like, different people, restaurants from the area to have different booths, or is it gonna be just one booth? If you would like to talk, that's fine.
Why, it'll take me a half second.
Okay, not a problem.
Well, he's walking up here. I was wondering if they looked at putting the food trucks along Third and Park Street in those parking spaces, so that people don't have to cross the street, but they'd be connected to the park?
And just close off the street instead.
Yeah, oh, 'cause you'd have to close the whole street, or?
Yeah, if you're gonna have, you'd have to close the whole street. Your barricades have to go all the way to the end of the block to be safe. That's correct.
Couldn't you face them in, though? Could you put them along the curb in the parking space and then have the opening be on the sidewalk side?
Are you talking about Third Street on the south side?
No, I think she's talking about Parks, it's actually Parks Street, Brad.
Park Street and Third, so the whole corner, that you could line the park corner with food trucks or tents, so that on the other side, you could still drive. They would, that would be the back of it, and then the front side would be along the side. So, you would walk from the park across the sidewalk to the opening of the food truck.
It may not all be food trucks, though, so I'll let Sean address it.
So, to be careful for the restaurants on Main Street, as well as Juicy's and Park Place. I was just looking at doing one, possibly two, per concert for this first year. That way, they can make some money, everybody makes some money, everybody's happy. So, I'd like to keep it as minimal as possible, one to do each week. It would be local people that we would use, and we would just rotate throughout the 10-week series.
So, you'd have two people, and then next, we'd be two different people, I think?
Correct.
And this?
And that way, we could rotate around and keep everybody happy.
Well, that'd be good. Because you could kind of tailor it somewhat with the kind of music, too, so.
Yes, indeed. The flavor to go along with the flavor of the music. On the wine part, we're flexible. We can widen that or shorten it, either way.
Well, as jammed as the concerts are usually, I anticipate a much stronger response than will fit in what is little arms, like, it's like the width of two little picnic tables. So, that already looks a little cramped.
We can spread that out, no problem.
Switch the two.
Right.
I think we can certainly work with, Doug and I can work with these folks on figuring out their parking with the council authority, you know, to close parking spaces or whatever. I think we can easily work that out.
Yeah, I think we could do parallel, and, yeah. We could work together, we'll get it resolved.
As long as we have your permission to do that. And they also want to provide a few more handicap parking spots, too, because we, yeah, we could use a few more during the concert, so some of that will be designated for ADA's.
Didn't we approve food, like, a few years ago?
We did.
Okay.
And then, they, was it another, I was like, director management, didn't want it, even on the concert, even on the contract, so we took it out of the contract, and so, we're bringing it back again.
Very welcome, we tried to stay.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Any other questions?
Well, I think that restaurants are still gonna do great as well, and so, I hope we kind of keep track of that, because I'd like to see that we grow even, you know.
And includes.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Cool.
And according to our municipal code, the council needs to approve any commercial use of parking lots. That's why it has to come before you every time there's a request for the center back to you.
That does bring one other question. Does he need to get, like, an ABC license for the day type thing, for each day?
There will be a permit, an ABC permit, part of their, yeah, a big part of the requirements. They have to have that.
Okay.
And then, the county will deal with the food thing, as far as allowing them to meet the requirements they need for serving.
The PD will work with him, make sure the alcohol licenses are taken care of. It's not a big deal.
Thank you.
We all love the concert.
I know. Thank you very much. Just trying to shake it up a little bit.
Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Have comments? Okay, then I bring it back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'm looking to approve the denim to the BiCoastal Media 2017 through 2019 concert series contract, allowing food service area and wine tasting garden with the appropriate insurance coverage. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Y, I said it. Thank you. Next on the agenda will be ...
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will be the police chief and his quarterly stats.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. This year, I wanted to try to do a better job at keeping the council and the public aware of our statistics and some of the work we do more frequently than I have in the past, so I plan to bring this every quarter and then a recap at the end of the year. And this by no means is all-encompassing of everything that the police department does, but these are some of the highlights and some of the statistics that the public has an interest in. So, and I think staff left you everyone a copy, and there's some available for the public out there. But starting with response times, priority one, which is emergency, in this first quarter, we had a 3 minutes and 13 second response time. Priority two, non-emergency, was 12 minutes and 4 seconds. Priority three, which is cold calls, when we're available, was 16 minutes and 50 seconds. We responded to 1,223 community-generated calls for service, made 405 traffic stops, had 485 officers initiated incidents for a total of 2,113 activities that a police officer either responded to or initiated in the past three months. Part one crimes, as you've heard before, are the crimes that the FBI uses to report on crime in the United States for crime rates in communities throughout the US. And those include homicide, we had zero, rape, we have one, robbery, we had one, assaults, we had 16, burglaries, 10, larcenies, 29, stolen vehicles, two, arson's, zero, and domestic violence, 10. Felony arrests, 23, misdemeanors, 85. DUI arrests and offenses, we've had 14 arrests on 32 different DUI charges, 13 traffic collisions, five property damage-only collisions, which are generally on off-street with very minor damage or on-street with minor damage, no injuries. 16 parking sites, 31 moving sites, six infraction sites. And then, our detective did 32 criminal investigations, and those are generally felony crimes, some serious misdemeanors of the complex that he would work. And we wrote two affidavits for search warrants and furtherance of these cases. One item that I've just newly added, and I think it's important for the public to be aware of the types of training that their police officers are receiving throughout the year, so I've added that. All of your police staff in this quarter received 391 and a half hours of training combined, and that included training in law enforcement teletype systems, communication skills, de-escalation, domestic violence, elder independent adult abuse, first aid, CPR, hearsay testimony, high-tech crimes, human trafficking, FEMA and Incident Command training, racial and cultural diversity training, sovereign citizen extremists, terrorism, vehicle pursuit policy, general policy training, Native American cultural awareness, chief city manager training, management and leadership training, active shooter, confidential records release, tribal jurisdictional training as it relates to additional local, state, and federal jurisdictions, and how that all works, use of force, current legal issues, camera footage release, evidence-based policing, fentanyl detection, communicating during disasters, and lawsuit mitigation. And that is the report. Now, I think what you have here is the
Now, I think what you have here is the SB 230 and the AB 392 legislation?
Yes.
For the next item?
Yes.
Just a motion to receive and file. Sorry about that. Basically, is there any comments on the statistics? Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on the statistics? With that?
Thank you, chief. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a very impressive report, both your super quick response times, as well as the time that you're investing in making sure that our department is trained and ready to deal with situations that are coming at us.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
There is a suggested motion for this. Do you need to...
I thought it was just a receive and file. I don't have the staff report in front of me. Actually, I don't have the staff...
It was a motion to receive and file.
I think that's what it was, yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the police statistics report for the first quarter of 2019. Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, next order of business is SB 230 and AB 392 of the police.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. What you have before you is a request to review information related to California Senate Bill 230 and California Assembly Bill 392, and consider a resolution and letter if you decide it's appropriate to be sent to the Assembly and the Senate, and that is, again, should you decide to support the request in the end. This is a very complex issue that's been going on for well over a year and a half. I did provide what I believe is a very detailed staff report with multiple attachments. I'm not gonna go line by line through that staff report. I'm hoping that everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. What I'm gonna do is try to do a short summary of what I feel is going on, and then leave that to your consideration, but... So, back in early 2018, there was a Assembly Bill called 931 that sought to change the standards of use of force in California. There was a lot of communication back and forth between the Senate member, the Assembly members that authored that, and some of the police groups on what they felt would or wouldn't work best for law enforcement in California. And ultimately, that bill was taken off the table due to not enough discussion, there needed to be more discussion, so everybody kind of agreed to take it off the table and start again this year. So what came forward this year was two different versions of use of force bills for changes in California, and that was the Senate Bill 230 and the Assembly Bill 392. I do want to say that I do believe that the standards on use of force and some of the language does need to change in California. However, it's, this is a very critical issue, and it needs to be done right, in my opinion, to protect the community we serve, protect the officers that are out there handling the calls, and protect the jurisdictions from civil litigation that we really shouldn't have. So there's a lot of interest in it, but basically, Senate Bill 230, which is very lengthy in its writings, basically what it does is it seeks, first of all, to change the hundred-year-old penal code statute regarding use of force against a fleeing felon, which that portion of it's unconstitutional and has been for years. But then it goes on to focus on leaving the use of force standards consistent with what has been decided by the Supreme Court in Graham versus Connor in Tennessee versus Connor since 1985 and 1989, which essentially is that an officer's use of force must be judged by that of a reasonable op, what a reasonable officer would do acting under the same set of circumstances, and not to be judged by twenty, by the benefit of 2020 hindsight when analyzing all these facts later, when the court wasn't there to be involved in a situation that may have happened in one or two seconds. So essentially, it does that, it keeps consistent with the longstanding Supreme Court decisions, and it also requires extensive and detailed policy changes that would be consistent with all 500-plus law enforcement agencies in the state of California. And then it would require detailed training for all eighty to ninety thousand police officers in the state of California. And going to AB 392 for a second, basically, that one seeks to change the language, which is different from that of the Supreme Court decisions, and it also does not have components in it to require everybody to have the same policies, and it also does not have components to require this detailed training on things such as use of force, de-escalation, responding to calls with, that are related behavioral health or mental illness. So that's kind of a summary of them, and I feel that with all the detailed policy and training, Senate Bill 230 is the right way to go, is supported by all the law enforcement. And the key to, if you want to make changes in use of force, and you want to reduce the incidence in use of force, which we do, the key to doing all that is policy and training. You're not gonna be successful with making a difference by just changing the language in a law. You have to go further, and you have to train, continually train, and continually update policies. And we're already ahead of the game here, because as you saw from the previous report, we're already doing the de-escalation training, we're already keeping our policies updated. We're gonna be, we're close right now to being in line with what would be required if Senate Bill 230 is the one that passes. So that's, that's a kind of a quick synopsis of the bills, and rather than going through a lot more detail, I prefer to leave it at that and take any questions the council or the public may have regarding these bills. I can say that they're rapidly evolving and changing, at least in the case of Senate Bill 230. Last Thursday, there was some significant amendments made to it, which staff left copies for council members and the public. But basically, in a nutshell, those significant changes had to do with more policy language, more policy direction, and more training components. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and if council agrees and so chooses, I would ask for a motion to support Senate Bill 230 and oppose Assembly Bill 392, authorize the attached motion, authorize the mayor to sign the letter, which will be sent to your, our local representatives that serve our community, as well as the authors of the bills, as well as numerous other senators and assembly members who are co-authors or involved in support or opposition, and also be sent to cal chiefs for distribution to who they so believe it should go to.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from the council?
Chief, could you speak to why you're bringing this request now? It seems really early in the year.
Because they are, there are ongoing discussions as we speak. Assembly Bill 392 was already in the Public Safety Committee last Tuesday. It actually passed the Public Safety Committee, and generally, after that, it would go to the General Assembly floor, but it was referred back by the chair to another committee, which is a signal that they feel there needs to be more discussion on it, on that particular bill. And there's also potentially continuing changes to that bill or Senate Bill 230. So, I mean, I think it's important at this time and not to wait, to let assembly members and let senators know what a position might be on that, so that they're aware of what local jurisdictions might feel about a particular bill. Because I feel that, you know, them hearing back from the community or other elected leaders of communities is gonna have an impact on how this all plays out in the end. So it's likely that it will go clear to the end in August, and it is possible that both of these bills could pass, the Assembly and the Senate, which is not a good thing, because then they're gonna both go to the governor's desk. And there really needs to be a solid bill, one solid bill that moves forward, not two. And so that's my desire to bring it forward now. I think waiting too long wouldn't be good.
Any other questions?
So, chief, what's the status, I mean, here in Lake County, the sheriff's department is down, you know, like a dozen officers or more, we're down three. What, statewide, how do we stand as far as filling all the law enforcement positions that are needed? Or is that an issue?
Well, we're consistent. It's a consistent problem in many rural counties, Lake County included, with keeping law enforcement positions filled. There's various factors that play into that, but yes, we know our local sheriff's department is down significantly. We happen to be down three officers right now, which is a significant issue for us, because that puts us at the bare minimum, and then when I get another one that's going off on a medical, now I'm in the minuses, I have emergency staffing issues, and I'm trying to keep bodies out on the street in the interest of protecting the public. And to me, these, this is the biggest issue facing law enforcement in decades, if not a hundred years. This is going to...
Disincentivize.
Well, it is. If the wrong use of force bill passes, and then, and, you know, I'll just be blunt and give you an example, is Assembly Bill 392, I believe it's gonna put officers in a very dangerous situation, to where they're gonna be second guessing what they're doing, and it's also gonna cause officers not to want to go out and proactive. It may cause me not to be willing to tell them to go out and be proactive, because if they get into these situations where their life's in danger and we don't have enough resources, where they have all the tools that might be required, then I think that also puts the community in danger. So this is a very significant issue facing law enforcement statewide. We're already in a statewide staffing crisis. There's nationally, there's a decrease in people that want to go into law enforcement for numerous reasons, and with the wrong restrictions on this, it's gonna make it worse. And I think in the end, if this is not done right, the ultimate people that are gonna lose are the communities we're protecting. They're gonna see less law enforcement being able to respond, and because, you know, if I have certain restrictions, I have to first look after the safety of my staff, then I have to look after the liability of our jurisdiction, and I can't put either in a situation that's gonna bankrupt us with lawsuits or things like that. So it's a very critical situation, and I think that's a reason why I asked to bring it forward so quickly. There's other cities that are, that, one that I know of that's already gone to city council, many more that are looking to go to their councils now. I've been asked by a few people for our staff report and our documents, which I've sent to those cities, those police chiefs, to bring forward to their city councils. So that's my position on it. I, you know, I want our council to have enough information to make an independent decision and determine if they feel that's appropriate to agree with me or not, but that's what I feel on the seriousness of this situation.
Well, the reason I ask is because it seems to me that passing of 392, where you criminalize police activities, put them in danger by not having the ability to do what they need to do, and holler them into court in a, after the fact, situation that's not realistic because they were doing it in the heat of the moment, what a normal officer would do. It just seems that the last thing we need to do is be taking people out of the ideal profession of becoming law enforcement, because they have the chance of litigation or being criminally accused and that kind of thing, and it just seems that the only thing this could do is make a problem that's already bad, make it even worse by disincentivizing police officers getting involved because of the nature of this type of, you know, criminal activity that could be charged against them, so I...
And that's a very serious issue, but I do want to go back and make it clear that we want to minimize use of force, particularly deadly force. We do not want to have to use it. But unfortunately, we're in a business where we have to be prepared to use force all the way up to deadly force to protect ourselves or our community. We don't want to do that. I don't know any officer that goes out and says, "I hope I get into a situation today." That's the most terrible thing you could ever have to go through, and nobody wants to do it. We want to minimize that as much as possible, but at the same time, we want to be able to protect ourselves, protect the community, and survive. And if you've got one officer out there, he has to be able to go from this piece of force to this piece of force in an instant to properly defend himself and the community. He can't be required to go down a line by himself and say, "I gotta try this, I gotta try that." Within one second, he has to decide what the most appropriate action is for the protection of himself and the community, but I just wanted to be real clear on that. We don't want to have these situations, we want to avoid them, but you're not gonna change the way officers use force without good policy, updated policy, and good continuing, ongoing training that California law enforcement does not have right now. We have very limited training on the de-escalation and the responding to calls regarding mental health and things like that. It needs to be vastly improved. The Senate Bill 230, I think, is the key to making that happen. It's gonna require the training, it's gonna require the policies, and everyone's gonna have to be held to the same standard. That's the key to making anything work. I don't see any of that in the other bill. And also, if the other bill passed, we'd still have to then go back and figure out these policies and training, and then pay for it, all the local jurisdictions. One thing that Senate Bill 230 does have right now is if, there's a provision that if the Commission on State Mandates determines that any of this stuff is mandated by the state, there's gonna be measures for reimbursement to pay cities back for what it costs to train these police officers. I don't see any of those provisions in AB 392. We'd be paying for it without it, because we'd have to do it anyway.
Any more comments? Anybody from the public like to speak on this?
Michael Drea? Just a question, and I know it is early in the legislative year, and probably this is coming from police chiefs and their recommendations, but maybe I'm not seeing things in AB 392 that the police chief's organization does, or that you do, chief. I'm just not seeing a change. I'm just, what I see is an additional finding that people with physical, mental disabilities or something may be more likely to experience greater levels of physical force. But in the text, that's a finding, and in the text of the bill itself, I don't see where a change is being made that is gonna substantially improve or provide a disincentive to good policing. And I compare and contrast that with what I see in Senate Bill 230, which, I'm glad to hear police chiefs is on board with that, but in terms of the actual impact on the department, I mean, you were mentioning the last item, three-hundred-and-ninety staff hours of training. This looks like the sort of thing that AB 392 would probably try to put in there later, specific training things that would, de-escalation, cultural bias, cultural competency, you know. So I'm not arguing that these are all good things to put in the training, but I'm just curious why it's a good idea in Senate Bill 230 to add this laundry list and a potential that you'll get reimbursed for the cost of that additional training. It's not a lock. That's pretty boilerplate language in Section 5, versus, I don't see any real change under AB 392 at this point, and again, it's early in the year, it can get gutted and amended, no problem. Before cities and counties start rushing to take positions on bills that haven't fully gelled, I just wonder if you could drill down into, or city attorney could drill down into the specific bills and say, "This is what makes 392 kind of a deal..." and say, "This is what makes 392 kind of a deal killer for police chiefs, and this is why Senate Bill 230 is the better mousetrap." It almost sounds like Senate Bill 230 was introduced to offset whatever concerns were raised in AB 392, but I'm just not seeing it. So Senate Bill 230, if everyone agrees with that, no problem. Better training is always a good idea. But the opposition on AB 392, I don't know. I'm just not seeing it. So a little more education on that may help the council to make a decision on that as well.
So I can address that. What are you going to say?
Well, Mayor Proton, I think that Mr. Green may be, it's a little bit confusing the printouts that the legislature provides. And the italicized text is actually just recent amendments to the bill. But AB 392 actually is a very significant change in the text of these particular provisions, the penal code provisions, which, as the chief mentioned, haven't been changed since like the late 1800s or something. And so in effect, they're not actually the standards that govern use of force in California. It's the federal constitutional standard that applies because that is now the floor, if you will. So what AB 392 is actually doing is it's creating an entirely new standard, not entirely new. I mean, it's using a lot of the standards that Springport has laid out. But it is changing them slightly and making them sound more like the standards for self-defense that a civilian would use if they were having a self-defense, defense to criminal prosecution. So it's making it a more difficult standard to meet where an officer charged with some type of use of excessive use of force.
And to, if I may, to address more on Mr. Green's comment. So Assembly Bill 392 is essentially the same as what Assembly Bill 931 was in 2018. Basically, it, basically what it does is it changes, like the city attorney was saying, the language and the use of force in California to a necessary standard rather than a reasonable standard. And there's some other concerns that I have with it, such as wording in there that it doesn't define certain things as well as Senate Bill 230 does. And Assembly Bill 392, when it was 971, never had any of these proposed changes during 2018 or so far yet this year. But in discussions that Cal chiefs, lobbyists, and other association lobbyists are having with our legislatures, they are trying to make changes that everyone feels would be beneficial to making the right changes in use of force in California. So the, all these italicized changes that you're seeing got added in on April 11th, I believe, was the last update to Senate Bill 230 that added in additional language and additional training requirements. And so far, we haven't seen any of that come into AB 392. So that's, goes back to why I was saying, I think, you know, the more training, the more policy you have, that's how we're going to change use of force. That's how we're going to save lives. That's what's going to create less police shootings. The more we can train officers, the more we can regulate with policy equals less use of force situations. With the language that's in 392 as it sits now, all it's going to do is change the standard and put police in a worse situation to where you could have officers charged or more liability on cities without doing training and policy development. So hopefully that gives you a little more information.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, with that, bringing it back to council.
Well, I just wanted to first thank Chief for following these because I know it takes a lot of time to stay on top of it and bringing the information back to us. It's really helpful so we're not surprised later.
I appreciate that because it's very complex and rapidly evolving and it is almost a full-time job to try to stay on top of it. And, you know, I'm looking at stuff every day to try to stay on top of this.
They're really moving fast and I don't really know if they're listening to anyone, but it's worth definitely trying to put in what is going to work for us and what's not. So thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to support SB 230 and oppose AB 392. Authorize the attached resolution and direct the mayor to sign a letter to be sent to appropriate members of the California Assembly and Senate. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, next up is the Community Department Director for Clean Water Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, members of the council. This is a renewal with amendment to the previous Clean Water Program Agreement that existed between both the City of Lakeport and the county and the City of Clear Lake. It's kind of gone by the wayside and actually expired a couple of years back due to some staffing issues with the County Department of Water Resources. And we haven't necessarily been keeping up on all of our items. I have great faith in the new staff that's over there. We've been meeting very consistently over the past year trying to get this program backed up on its feet. We've resubmitted old reports that weren't properly submitted in the years past. And it came to our attention that this agreement had actually expired. In doing so, we also looked over some of the issues that were occurring with this agreement in the past. The main one is it calls out a number of specialized working groups that were kind of hard to manage. So what this agreement tries to do is kind of consolidate those all together. Additionally, the other problem is that the state's also added some additional mandates into this that would kind of necessitate, you know, two or three other working groups. So we figured it was better to kind of consolidate all those together, give the advisory council the ability to create special working groups if necessary, but otherwise conduct all the business together in one group. So all these, this agreement is, I believe, going before the city council the end of this week or at their next upcoming meeting. And then it will also be going to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Additionally, we're also seeking, I know the mayor's not here this evening, but we'll need to appoint one member of your council to the board as well as our Stormwater Program Manager, which either be myself or Bonnie Sharp in our office. But if that doesn't happen this evening, we can change that.
I was just going to ask, do you need that appointment before May 7?
No, no. So we might, if we want to just pull that portion of the motion off and just move forward with the agreement and wait on that, that'd be fine. There's no...
We have an appointment to the Airport Commission coming up on May 7 also. So I don't know if you, it's up to council if they want to take it tonight or if you want to wait until May 7 to do that appointment when the mayor's here.
Yeah, there's no rush on appointing anybody. There's not going to be a meeting until probably end of May, early June. But any questions on the agreement? The previous one lapsed and this one replaces it and tries to kind of capture some of the issues that were occurring with it in the past.
Does the council have any questions?
No.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Don't all run up at one time. Bringing it back to council, did you want to...
So I just moved to adopt the agreement, providing for implementation and maintenance of the Lake County Clean Water Program, period.
And then we could take up the adoption at the next meeting of the, I mean, the assignment of them.
I'm just curious if anyone wanted to, Mireya wants to do it? Okay.
Well, then I'll amend my motion. I mean, because the mayor is, he's no better than the rest.
I think it's the mayor on the point.
They can fight over it next time. So I'll second your motion.
Which is?
Your original motion.
Without the appointment. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement, but no appointment.
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We go forward. Thank you. Okay. Now it's Doug's turn. Utility vehicle purchase.
Mayor Proton, council members. Before you, as a request for authorization for the city manager to sign a purchase agreement for a utility vehicle for the Public Works Department. This is actually going to, the first vehicle going to the Roads Department versus the other ones were for the utilities departments. It's long overdue. And this is a budgeted item. It was in our, it's in our current budget year. And so we're just requesting your authorization to make that purchase.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
What exactly are you going to use that for, Doug? I mean, it's a big, heavy-duty truck. Are you going to like?
The utility box are sliding in there.
Well, I know that.
I can tell you what that vehicle's used for.
I'm just curious because I know we've got a big dump truck, so you're not going to put dirt in it, so.
Right. Well, we have multiple trailers that we tow.
Okay.
We have a trailer that is ready to haul one of our smaller rollers. In order to tow that, we use a one-ton pickup.
Okay.
To tow those kind of vehicles. The other thing that we use for is we're looking at hopefully in the future being able to purchase a tap pot, which is used in our paving operations. That carries hot emulsified asphalt in it. And it helps asphalt and coal packs stick better. So that is 250 gallons. And so you need a larger vehicle to tow that. So instead of trying to use a dump truck, which is overkill, we go with just a very large pickup, which is easier to move around, costs less to operate, but yet can still pull the bigger trailers.
Okay, so it's basically to pull the equipment and stuff around the job sites and stuff. I was just curious. Yeah. Any comments from the public? Okay, with that being said, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of one truck for the Public Works Department. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next question, next thing on the agenda, SB 1 project list. And there's also from Doug.
I'll get my iPad to catch up. Mayor Proton, council, before you is a mandatory requirement for SB 1 funds that the local jurisdiction body approves the spending of those funds and the allocating of those funds. So this is a formality that we need to complete in order to file for our SB 1 allotment for the upcoming 1920 year. We get a, it just creeped up a little bit from the '79 we got in 1819 to, well, the numbers kind of jump around because they're not firm yet, but we're looking probably around $84,000 is going to be our SB 1 allotment for this upcoming year. Those funds were, last year's funds were dedicated to the Second Street Project. We're going to be rolling those funds forward to the 1920 year as well as taking the 1920 allotment for the Second Street Project. That project has grown substantially from what I originally looked at. And total build-out on that right now, to do it completely as a complete street project, Mireya will know what I'm talking about, it's a complete, I mean, good sidewalks and everything is all included in that, is going to be up in the $400,000 range to do between Main Street and Park Street. So we're trying to figure out, we're probably going to be doing it in phases. The curb gutter and sidewalk needs to be replaced. The biggest, as well as the roadway. Starting out is just trying to do an overlay, just a real brief history here. When I first looked at it as an SB 1 project, I was just going to go in and try to do a quick overlay just to make the road better. And then we got looking at, well, how much is that going to really cost and what's all involved? And we got looking at no curb, no gutters on half of it and all these other things. And sometime if you want to have some time to take a nap, I can explain to you about vertical curves and how all those work because we don't have one on that road. So to make a very long story short, I got our city engineer involved. We really took a look at it to make it like the rest of Main Street, which we're trying to stay homogenous. And so in order to bring it up to, so that it looks like what we have on our Main Street coming down to our park, that's where the cost escalation came. Because then that cost includes new tree wells and also includes the new street lights. So it's an all-inclusive project. So what I'm asking you to approve now is to put this money into Second Street and we're going to have to probably phase that. So this money will be probably going to curb gutter and sidewalk as a first phase. And then after we get that installed, then we'll have to figure out if we want to use other general fund monies or how we're going to offset that down the road to get a, you know, to come in and do the street as well. So we're looking at all kinds of options. Some of us can be coming, definitely going to be coming back to council. What I'm just really asking for tonight, I guess I'm kind of long-winded and I apologize, is just for your approval that we delegate those funds towards the Second Street Project. That's what I'm asking for. Now that got everybody totally confused. I'll entertain. Any questions?
Anybody from the council have questions?
Well, just one of the things, it's not such a big deal now that, what was it, Proposition 6 didn't pass and all that stuff. But I know that, that the APC and everybody that's involved with road construction, then with this SB 1 money coming out, they want that, you know, shovel ready, let's get it done. We want to make sure people see the results of their, you know, the money that they're paying in. And, I mean, I don't think that's a big deal here when you're talking about $400,000 project and you're only getting like, you know, like what, 160 so far?
170 so far.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it would be better to do something of value than trying to throw it at some kind of an overlay that's only going to last for a short period of time or won't be very significant. But I think that the danger of overturning SB 1 is not so onerous now that you need to worry about getting it done in the same year and putting up posters that say, "Yeah, this is SB 1."
Yeah, we need, it's such a focal point, Second Street with the Carnegie Library at the end of the street. And so it really needs to match with Third Street, at least what Third Street has with the trees and...
It would be nice.
Yeah, because it's going, and that's all done, it would be a main focal point down there in Library Park.
So are we talking about widening the sidewalks at all or are we talking, because originally you said something matching Main Street and we widen the sidewalks.
Correct. Well, have you noticed that the new sidewalk does come around the corner? So I would say if there is any widening, it's going to be minimal because of the street width. If we want to retain our parallel parking while we have angular parking for part of it too. So that's going to include some, you know, getting the parking straightened around on that. But to answer your question, George, to the best of my recollection is though, they're not going to be eight foot, we're not widening them out to the eight-foot sidewalks like what we got on Main Street. We just don't have the real estate to do that. We're going to make them as wide as we can, but yet still keep our street functional.
And are we, you know, you said that we're going to down the road somewhere, change out the lights to match like Main Street and all that. Are we going to put those up for like people to donate kind of thing and stuff like?
Yes.
Yes. Well, what we would have to do with this project is we would have to run all of the underground, you know, conduits for the electrical and get the electrical all installed. We would have to put in the pedestals for the light because those are poured within the sidewalk. But then we could safely cap those. And then as we, you know, as the funds come in and we can get... come in and we can get the lights purchased, you know, then we can do that.
I would assume you would also run the water and stuff like?
Yes, irrigation would also be ran.
Or they could be purchased and then paid back as we have, so that they're done and then be paid back as families dedicated to their, you know.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? I think I've already opened it to public, so looking for a motion.
Move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the City of Lakeport SB 1 project list for fiscal year 2019-20 and direct staff to submit to California Transportation Commission.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel, it's approved. Thank you. Okay, last thing on the agenda is City Council Communications. Margaret, do you have anything you would like to speak about?
Nothing for you to add, thank you.
David.
No report.
Doug, are you done or talking?
I'm done. Thank you.
Nick, do you got something?
No, no report.
Okay. Chief?
Yeah, I'll just add, it wasn't really in my report on the stats, but I wanted to say that REMF, our insurance pool, did a good job in putting on a police chief and management training last week that Jason and I intended, and so I just wanted to make you aware of that. It's one of the better ones that I've been to as far as the information that REMF put together and brought to us. Not only that, but they sought advice from us as far as what we thought should be on there, and there was a lot of the de-escalation, use of force, malhealth issues, homeless issues, all that kind of critical stuff that we really need. So I just wanted to let you know that I appreciated REMF's efforts in trying to keep the police chiefs and the police management really in the loop on the best information that's out there.
Did you do your active shooting training already?
Yeah, we did actually do that, and it went very well. I think we ended up training 55 more peace officers from around the lake and also some from Mendocino County. So it went very well, and at this point, I think we got close to 120 officers through the national standard active shooter training, which is probably close to, it's 100% of my staff, it's probably close to 85, 90% of the rest of the officers around the county. So it was, it was very good. Thanks for the reminder.
David?
Just really quickly, we have our second public outreach meeting coming up this Thursday for our Prop 68 Parklands Grant upcoming, that's due in October or something, for the development of a new lakefront park there. It builds on our first community meeting, but certainly if you missed that one, you can certainly attend this one without missing a beat. The main thing is kind of going over all the amenities that we kind of brainstormed last time, and kind of try to develop a prioritized list, and then ultimately that will build into a third community meeting, actually looking and reviewing some potential concept plans for the lakefront park. So that's this Thursday here in City Council Chambers, 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you. Kelly?
No report.
Mr. Parker?
Well, I would probably be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that there is like a nationwide very serious problem, not unlike what we're having with police forces, because of the horrible job of referees and umpires that are being abused constantly by the public and unsportsmanlike conduct, and their, the average life expectancy of a new referee, out of 10 referees, only two remain after the first two years, because eight of them are leaving because of the constant badgering and abuse and unsportsmanlike conduct in the current state of affairs. And 85% of the current officials said they would quit if sportsmanship got any worse, which it is getting worse. And so that is why I was, we had like 10 games around the county and we only have like 16 officials. Looked like football season next year, we're going to be starting with seven and we need 15. So this is going to be affecting everybody in the nation, and it looks like in the not-too-distant future, prep sports may be non-existent because we won't be able to get umpires because of the abuse and sportsmanlike conduct, and the young kids do not want to get involved. It's kind of like police force because there's so much, so many issues, and then there's, on the internet, people are being beaten up by coaches, and then they post it all over and the kids are going, hey, not my lifetime, I'm not going to referee. So anyway, I will be back here next week with my umpire's jersey on again. Hopefully I will be here on time, I have another game here at Clear Lake High School, but it is a very, very serious problem, and ultimately, there's going to be one umpire or referee doing games, and eventually there won't be any because nobody wants to get into it because people don't understand that this is about the development, the growth of, you know, student athletes and future citizens, not a life-and-death struggle, and the abuse that they hand out is just unbelievable. And I'm head of the association, and I came home from a meeting last night, and my wife asked me how it was, and I said, so very depressing, and it's not just that, it's all over the place. And so I will be back in my blues next week because I'm doing what I can. We needed 20 officials, we only had 17, we had three games with one official, and you can bet that those guys that were alone were getting lambasted by the fans. I heard it all night tonight from the winning team, so imagine what they say from the losing team. So we're in a serious impasse, and it does not look good for the future of referees, so we're looking for them in all sports, particularly football. So, sorry about that.
Good job.
Councilmember Turner?
Just wanted to encourage people to join us at the Senior Center Chili Cook-Off on Saturday, April 27.
Thanks. That's all. Councilmember Adina?
No reports.
Basically, April 24 is legislative days if people have nothing they want to do, but go down and look at the, how laws are made and stuff like that. Very interesting. Me and the wife went down last week because she had some bills that she was interested in, and it's quite amazing how many people show up and what they say, and it's like they go from one policy committee to approve, and then it goes to another policy committee to approve, and there goes, just goes through all these different things to go through. So it's interesting. But other than that, April 24 legislative days and also Blue Gene Day.
Denim Day.
Yeah, Denim Day. So with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
Second.
All in favor? Ken?
Are you going to the extension day?